All right, moving on to Agenda Item Number Five. This is going to be probably fairly involved because of the complications, but this is a culmination of a long process, many, many, many years of preparation and anticipation on both sides and a lot of many other sides for the community. This is Agenda Item Number Five is consideration of an appeal of the Planning Commission's approval of Use Permit Seventeen dash O five and environmental assessment seventeen dash ten filed on behalf of Stop the Dump, the site located on one four zero Epley Drive in Yuba City. All right, so before we begin this, do we have any council members who need to make disclosures regarding ex parte communications or conflicts of interest?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I have some disclosures I need to make.
All right.
First of all, I do not have any financial interest or any other interest in this matter before us tonight. I am not an officer, member, or employee of either Recology Recycling Industries or Stop the Dump. During and after the election, I have met with constituents as is my right and obligation. I am also entitled to provide expression of my own views about policy matters of importance in the community, particularly during an election campaign, which I have done. Throughout my campaign, I have consistently been clear. I held strong feelings about ensuring transparency, accountability, and a full and complete review of any project as permitted or required by law, a fair process, and protecting the health and safety of the citizens of this community. Consistent with this philosophy and before I was elected, I have been supported of request from whatever source for extensions to allow the public additional time to review the environmental documents associated with this project. I did not support such requests as a member of any particular group or party of this matter, but as a business owner and private citizen who generally supports transparency, accountability, and a fair process of all parties. While I have had serious questions whether the project initially met with the requirements of the city and state law, I recognize that there has been recent changes to the project as originally proposed and additional changes which are being proposed by the parties this evening, all of which I will consider with an open mind. I have also received new information as part of the staff packet provided to the public last week, which I'm also considering with an open mind. As I have stated previously, and I will state again, I have not predetermined this matter and will base my decision on the facts in the record as laws, facts in the records and laws as they apply to this project. Since the appeal was filed challenging the Planning Commission's decision, I have received the communications from the public and other parties and recycling industries regarding this matter to include offers to visit R.I. facilities in both Sacramento and Yuba City, various general comments from concerned citizens as to hearing this matter. Please note, no specifics on this matter were ever discussed as I expressed this matter would be heard on its merits when it comes before the council. I did not visit the R.I. facilities in either location, and I fully believe that I can hear and consider the appeal in a fair and objective manner and will base my decision on the evidence only in the record.
Thank you very much. Anybody else?
Through the mayor?
Yes.
I also want to disclose that I met with the appellant, Dave Koonin, Scott Koonin, and Dave Flores on January twelfth, twenty nineteen, at the recycling industry facility on one forty Epley Drive in Yuba City. The meeting took approximately in about an hour and a half. The initial meeting took place inside the recycling industry conference room with the appellants that I named. I was given a nice homemade chocolate chip cookie made by Dave, and I appreciate that. Thank you. The purpose of the meeting for me was to do some fact finding, listen to the appellant about their business history, the planning process, and overall understanding. After the meeting, I was given a tour of the facility and found it to be clean, odor-free, observed employees working, and well organized. The appellant showed me the new facility design, and I did not commit to any particular decision or outcome during these contacts. I believe that I can hear and consider the appeal in a fair and objective manner and will base my decision on the evidence only in the record. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else?
Yeah, yep, through the mayor. I'd like to disclose that beginning early last summer, late spring, R.I. had an open house to the public. It was opened up to the public, and I made an appearance there and took a tour of the facilities, and he gave us this update, what his plans were for the future. And other than that, that's about it for me that I'd like to disclose to the public.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sir?
I didn't have a visit.
No visit?
No.
Well, I did. Beginning back even before I became a member of this city council, I met with Mr. Koonin, and I have met several times, ten, twenty, on occasions, sometimes brief, sometimes for up to half hour, forty-five minutes, discussing the project as we're trying, as we're moving along, including over a brief lunch in Washington, D.C. last year. All aspects of our communication was generic in nature, just basically discussing the project, where he wanted to go, with not, no commitment was made, no, any bias was formed whatsoever. I also received a document from Mr. Koonin via email, which I would like to have the city clerk place in the record, if I may, which outlines the project, some details on the project, some pros, and some, looks like some Q and A type responses in an appeal Democrat article. I'd like to have that placed in the record if I may. And that is it. I too believe that I can make this vote fair and impartially with all the evidence and information on the record. All right? All right, so what I'm going to do real quick is explain what we're going to do here. So it's a hearing, the appeal, the decision, the Planning Commission, and we're going to use the following process. We'll have the staff presentation first. Stop the Dump representatives will then have ten minutes to speak in support of their appeal. Recycling Industries representatives will then have ten minutes to speak in support of their permits. I will then open the hearing to the public, and we'll give first priority to those who have a speaker card, and I do have one in hand so far. And after all members of the public have had an opportunity to comment, Stop the Dump representatives will have a total of six minutes to offer any rebuttal or closing remarks, if any. Recycling Industries representatives will then have six minutes to offer rebuttal, closing remarks, if any. I will then close the public comment portion of the hearing, and staff may then provide any comments or responses to questions raised during the public comment. And keep in mind, please, the time limits and public comment is exactly that. It's not necessarily question and answer. If we choose to move forward and present a question to staff, that'll be at my discretion. I will then provide the council members an opportunity to make any comments. After appropriate deliberation, the council will then take action. Any questions on that so far? Okay, city clerk, please note that staff reports and other written materials included in the agenda packet are hereby received and filed. Have any other written documents such as letters in opposition or support been submitted after the agenda packet was approved?
Yes, you have copies. All of the city attorney, city manager, and all council members have a copy. Also, there are copies out in the lobby, and the entire staff report is in a blue binder out in the lobby.
Okay. You please enter, you have also entered this into the record?
Yes, I have copies.
Now, I don't think we have an issue with fire access. Is Pete here? Fire chief, are you happy, sir? All right, you're happy, I'm happy. We'll move forward at this time with staff make its presentation and submitting any written documents. If council members have any questions, you can do so after staff presentation or if you like, you can wait until after public comment period. All right?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. By way of introduction, for those that don't know me, I'm Dennis Cook. I'm a planning consultant. The city hires me occasional to help out with, occasionally to help out with items, extra work, things like that. And in the absence of your Development Services Director, they've asked me to present this to you tonight. To start out, just with the procedural item, the back of this keeps falling off. Just to go over with the council, what your options are for tonight. The first is to uphold the decision of the Planning Commission, which would be to deny the appeal and let their decision stand. Second would be approve the appeal and deny the use permit, which would put the existing use permit, twelve oh one, would remain in force. And then the third would be also to deny the appeal, but instead of denying the use permit, you can add, subtract, or otherwise modify the conditions of the use permit in any way that you see fit. So just to start with the, by way of background, in recycling industries, they applied for a use permit to authorize to expand a previously approved use permit for their recycling facility, and that includes a use permit, a development plan, and the environmental assessment. Their proposal, and this is a summary. We picked the major items to go through. Every detail tonight would take forever. But basically, their proposal is to expand what's technically called their large volume transfer processing solid waste facility to expand from three to four acres, to increase the maximum daily intake from one hundred to three hundred tons per day. No limitation on deliveries, and that would be self haul and commercial packer trucks, and to add a new twenty-one thousand plus square foot building. This is, in compared to their previous use permit, they were allowed to build about an eighteen thousand square foot building that has not been built yet, and that old permit remains active if this doesn't go forward from here. Just for locational information, switch items here. The facility is in the Yuba City industrial area. Lincoln Road is right here, Garden Highway, the Lincoln Road, Garden Highway interchange right there. Then we have Epley Drive and right here, and Putnam Drive right here. So it's on the southwest corner of that. The Yuba City wastewater treatment plant is down in here as well as other industrial uses around it. And the facility itself is about nineteen hundred feet, as the crow flies, from the nearest residence. More detail on the facility itself in this aerial photo. This right here is their existing three acre site, and you can see they have five buildings on it and other storage. And then this down here is the one acre they've asked to be able to expand into. Just some history of the site for this business. Their first use permit for this was approved in February two thousand eight, and that was use permit oh seven oh twelve. And as you saw in the aerial photo, it was for the three acres, five buildings, and to operate the recycling facility. And the applicant is currently operating under this use permit. And then in two thousand fourteen, use permit twelve oh one was approved by the Planning Commission. It is not yet effectuated in the sense that they haven't gone forward to do the improvements, and that use permit is valid until July of two thousand twenty, so roughly seventeen months away. And it established it as a large volume transfer station. It provided for the removal of two of the buildings and construction of an eighteen thousand square foot building that has not yet been constructed, and it allows the intake of a hundred tons per day of mixed recyclables and solid waste. Also, just generally what it was allowed to, in that solid waste, they could have up to ten percent of putrescible, if I'm saying it right, material, which is odor stuff, food and items like that, waste that can cause odors. And then it was self haul only, no package, packer, garbage trucks were permitted by that permit. And the site plan for that, they have the existing five buildings here in red, and what the proposal was to remove these two buildings and replace it with the eighteen thousand, I think, five hundred square foot building. And again, that has not been implemented yet, and they have another seventeen months or so to implement that. More recently, they came in for a request of further expansion of the business, and that's the use permit and development plan that's before you on appeal tonight. Generally, the request is to expand from three to four acres, to expand their maximum daily intake from one hundred tons per day to three hundred tons per day, to allow packer trucks and self haul vehicles, and then no limitation on putrescible material. To switch over a little bit on the environmental document, because that is kind of the focus of the appeal, the process that we went through or the city went through. The applicant was allowed to hire a firm to prepare the environmental document, called a negative declaration, and they hired a company that has expertise in that. The city hired another company with a similar expertise to do a peer review of that document. They provided the city with comments and concerns, and the city adjusted that document accordingly. And that was sent out for what they call clearinghouse review, which is all the state agencies to review, as well as local agencies and a thirty day, or I think a twenty day, public review. After all that was done, and that was completed, Benchmark Consulting, city staff, Cal Recycle reviewed it, which is the state agency that oversees the recycling facilities throughout the state. The Yuba Sutter Local Enforcement Agency, they, it's the Yuba County Environmental Health Department that both counties utilize for that agency. And then the Feather River Air Quality Management District are concerned with odors and air quality issues. And then the Regional Water Quality Control Board, which oversees drainage and other types of water issues. After all of that, the agencies determined that with conditions and mitigation measures, all potential significant environmental impacts will be reduced to less than significant level. And the subsequent mitigated negative declaration is the appropriate environmental document. So it did have extensive public and agency review. Kind of switching over to the projects. This was modified from the Planning Commission staff report, and what we did was a comparison of what use permit twelve oh one permitted, what the original recycling industry's proposal was a request, and this is what your Planning Commission approved that is under appeal tonight. So the original request, the original three acres requested four acres. The Planning Commission approved four acres. Maximum ton per day of input was, the Planning Commission stuck to the hundred tons per day and did not go with the three hundred tons per day that was requested. Maximum putrescible material, and I apologize if I'm saying that wrong, but the Planning Commission stuck with the ten percent maximum. Types of deliveries, under the old use permit, self haul only, no packer trucks. And then what the Planning Commission approved was, except for the source separated curbside recyclables, materials may not be accepted via packer trucks. And then the origination of waste restrictions, where the garbage and recyclables come from. There originally were no restrictions, and the Planning Commission approved it so the materials can only come from Yuba City, or Yuba Sutter Counties and the cities within the counties. Regarding green waste, originally there were no restrictions. Through the Planning Commission, it's self haul only, no packer trucks. And that recycle, or that green waste has to be removed from the property within forty-eight hours. Hours of operation, originally, under the use permit twelve oh one, there were no restrictions on hours of operation. Through the Planning Commission, it was limited to seven A.M. to five P.M. Monday through Saturday, closed on Sundays. And then the facility can stay open for an hour or two before and after just to run their internal operations without the public present. And regarding noise, originally it was to comply with city regulations, and that basically is what the Planning Commission adopted all, although they added a criteria that if there are noise problems, we can require a noise study. There's certain time limits, how fast they have to do it. And if they're out of compliance with what the city standards are, they have to come into compliance. There are other conditions that the Planning Commission approved. The type of materials they can take in are basically aluminum cans, glass, electronic waste, tire recycling, green waste, scrap metals, mattress bed springs, rolled carpets, and clean wood waste. And they cannot process the materials here. They bring it in, they sort it, and they ship it out. But they're not allowed to do any processing, tire shredding, anything like that, under this conditions. Further, the putrescible material must be removed within forty-eight hours, and the applicant has to clean nearby roadways if there's waste along the road or wind-blown materials. And that was not previously in the criteria. And then that all utilized areas shall be paved. Right now, part of the property is not paved. So the site plan that was approved by the Planning Commission, excuse me, allows the site, oop, wrong button, sorry. I lost it. Oh, here we go. It allows the one acre expansion. From that old use permit, these two buildings were going to be removed and the other building placed over here. Instead, this building will remain. This building is to be removed and replaced over here, and there'll be about a twenty-one thousand square foot building placed over here. Additionally, they'll have to improve the landscaping along the perimeter. There's customer parking here that has to be fully landscaped and restripped and cleaned up. And then there's new vehicle, passenger vehicle truck, small truck parking down here that also has to be fully landscaped as part of the commission's approval. There's something like fifteen new trees added to the property as a result of that. And then everything has to be paved, either with asphaltic concrete or concrete. So to move on to the appeal itself, oh, there were some other Planning Commission conditions about, this is going, oh, I got it upside down, I'm sorry. Excuse me, I'm not used to your equipment here. Okay, on to the appeal. The attorney representing Stop the Dump based the appeal on two points. The first is that the commission erred in voting to approve the project without recirculation of the mitigated negative declaration because mitigation measures and the description of the project were added. And I want to point out that reference to mitigation measures and the description of the project, because we'll come back to that in a minute. So, and then the second, and the second part of the appeal was that the revised conditions of approval still require bonding and other methods to ensure enforcement needed to be added so that the construction operation of the revised recycling center is fully enforceable. So in response to those two appeal items, and I mentioned that they said that the mitigation measures and conditions were revised. No mitigation measures were revised as part of the Planning Commission's approval, so that's kind of a moot issue as far as revising that. And then additional project conditions, they were added by the Planning Commission, but they were not added to avoid significant effects. What the Planning Commission attempted to do was to reach a compromise between the two parties, and that's the reason for a lot of the new conditions. The Planning Commission's incorporation, and I apologize for getting in this level of detail, but the appeal is rather technical, and so we kind of have to respond with technical comments. The Planning Commission's incorporation of conditions of approval are consistent with the SECA guidelines explaining that recirculation is not required when measures or conditions of project approval are added after circulation of negative declaration, which are not required by SECA, which do not create new significant environmental effects and are not necessary to mitigate avoidable significant impacts. So as I meant, the project description utilized a negative declaration was based on the applicant's request. Even though the Planning Commission reduced the size of the project, and that will undoubtedly further reduce the environmental effects, no further mitigations were required by SECA. Again, they did those new conditions to try to reach a compromise between the parties. So thus, the Planning Commission's added conditions of approval and corresponding changes to the project description do not meet the definition of a substantial revision as found in SECA guidelines, and recirculation was not required. In response to the second part of the appeal, which is regarding the need to bond for enforcement of the conditions, typically bonding is used for ongoing operations such as proposed. And we tried to figure, there's different reasons, but we tried to find one closest to this. You use bonding when you have conditions difficult to enforce. They should only be utilized in the extreme cases. For example, if you have a contaminated site, you have an owner that could walk from the property, you could require bonding to ensure that they do the work. If they don't, you have the money to do that work. In this particular case, the applicant has operated this business at this site for a number of years. To staff's knowledge, it's not been, we have not received any violations regarding any conditions or otherwise operating to the detriment of others. So enforcement of conditions or otherwise controlling any obnoxious type of operation has never been an issue with the city. Also, the city already has adequate means to enforce the conditions of approval on any type of use permit. The zoning regulations right now has a section titled Failure to Comply with Conditions, which is right down this alley. It provides that a permit granted in accordance with this chapter may be revoked by the city council upon failure to comply with any conditions of the permit. This process also allows the city council to revise the original conditions of approval, if needed. So if there are problems in the future, staff usually tries to work voluntarily with the applicant to come into compliance. But if not, we can always bring it back to the city council. It's a public hearing, and you have every right to revoke or modify the conditions of the use permit as you determine or see fit. There's also a second place in the city ordinance that applies here for enforcement, and that is the zoning regulations allow the planning director, now called the Development Services Director, to enforce the rules of the zoning regulations via the infraction process, which typically results in fines being levied if voluntary compliance cannot be achieved. The city code enforcement office, the city has code enforcement officers that provide this function on a daily basis. And so, just like all kind of code enforcement, if there are problems, code enforcement can go out there. I always try to gain voluntary compliance, but in the end, they can issue citations and fines, and those fines multiply every day if they don't come in compliance. So to conclude, the Planning Commission-approved project will not be able to expand its material stream any more than was approved under the previous use permit. The new project will operate under stricter conditions than it was approved under the previous use permit. There has been prepared and reviewed by qualified professionals an environmental document that concluded that this revised project will not create any potential significant environmental impacts. The subsequent mitigated negative declaration meets all of the standards. The subsequent mitigated negative declaration meets all of the standards established by the California Environmental Quality Act. Next, based on staff's review of the appeal and SECA, the negative declaration does not need to be recirculated, and the city otherwise has adequate permit enforcement powers, so in our opinion, bonding is not needed. So more recently, last recent days, the appellant and the applicant, I'm told, have met and come to a mutual agreement on modifications to the additional conditional use permit. These modifications place revised and additional conditions on this project, staff supports Staff recommends, based on all of that, staff recommends upholding the planning commission's decision since the appeal lacks merit, but also to recognize the efforts of the two parties, council is requested direct staff to notice the appeal for the February 5th council meeting with modified conditions of approval and appropriate resolution for final consideration. And we're asking for that continuance, and hopefully tonight, if you can give staff some direction of where you're headed with this, so we can return on the 5th with the proper documents, whether it's this recommendation or whatever, we can return on the 5th with those documents. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions. We also have a team here, environmental people, traffic engineers, attorneys, to answer any other questions if I can't answer it. So thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council.
All right. Thank you very much. We can now open the public hearing. We receive one comment card from the public. Excuse me one second.
Mr. Mayor, before we go into the comment cards, did you want to grant the appellants and the applicants an opportunity to speak? In other words, here, the applicant and appellants first on the public hearing?
All right.
It's up to you. Thank you.
It's not the order I have here. Would you prefer that, sir?
My suggestion would be to hear from the applicant, Stop the Dump, first, followed by the recycling industries representatives for not more than 10 minutes each.
All right. Mr. Kang, if you got up, forgive me, we're going to reverse that. We're going to go back, we're going to hear from the Stop the Dump folks first.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. My name is Bridgette Barnes. I'm here representing Stop the Dump, and I wanted to first underscore that there has been a lot of work between my office, representing Stop the Dump, and the representatives of recycling industries, and we do concur that the most recent language distributed today with the amendments to the conditions are fully acceptable. With that, however, and to preserve the record, I need to go through a little bit of history here. I prepared a summary, some of which matches what staff said, and some of it expands on staff, what staff said. With me and PowerPoints, if I'm not used to the PowerPoint system for the same reasons as the gentleman had earlier, I avoid them, and so that is why I distributed the outline for you. But technically, one of the points that I wanted to mention is that this has been prepared as a summary because it's my understanding, and based on my review, of the application and all documents relative to the appeal, that the, that a portion of the permits were not properly noticed for tonight's hearing. I'm referring specifically to 1703. 1705 was noticed, and therefore, at, on the 5th of February, when we come back for hopefully final approval of conditions, at that time, 1703 has to be reopened also. I just wanted to correct that mention for staff, and that is one of the reasons we have the second hearing. On the page that I have marked, page three, summary of environmental concerns, we actually submitted 30 or 40 pages worth of objections and concerns raised to the mitigated NAGDAC proposed by the planning staff originally, and summarizing these, the, some of which have already been mentioned. At the time, the proposal included no limits on putrescent materials, and as staff has mentioned, closest residences are about 1,900 feet as a crow flies. The main objections had to do with the track, traffic congestion that was being presumed because of the inclusion of the trucks, and that there was no specific locus for where the trucks would be coming from, so it was impossible to, whether to confirm or deny KDA's assumptions, Ken Anderson's assumptions in the traffic study relative to where the impacts from the trucks and what time they would occur. The, related to that was air quality issues because the actual routes in terms of sourcing were not identified. The, I mentioned the smell issue. The other had to do with noise because of the hours of operation. There were issues related to fire, explosion, and hazmat that was not considered in the mitigating NAGDAC, greenhouse gas emissions that were not analyzed, and the, there were no biological analysis, excuse me, analyses included in the additional acre that was going to be allowed. The water quality impacts in terms of the maintenance of the site was also an issue for us because unlike the presentation made by staff, the California Water Quality Control Board had cited the facility in Yuba City previously. However, and since then, as you know, the, immediately before the hearing on November 28th, the staff and RI, not Stop the Dump, we, I was never contacted about the conditions. However, we were happy to see the reductions from 300 tons per day down to 100. We were happy to see a limit back down to 10% on putrescent. We were happy to see the limitation, the extreme limitation on the Packer trucks and the closing on Sundays. And so we did concur at the hearing that we, those conditions were very helpful. When we received the actual condition, written conditions, however, what jumped out at us was something I had already raised in my documents, which was that many of the conditions were self-policing. And what I mean by that is not that a city, and this city did not have power to enforce it, but it assumed because of generic language in the conditions that the operations would be in the control of the applicant recycling, and how to judge whether they were living within the scope of that condition were not covered. So the whole point of the work that I've done with recycling industry's attorneys has been to put specific limitation languages in the conditions to accomplish what we thought were the weaknesses, that, which RI's attorneys and their client have agreed to, and we've worked cooperatively, I would say, to accomplish that purpose. Going to page seven, and I have summarized again these changes in the conditions. I know that in your package, you have the full analysis there, and it's redlined, so you can see the changes. But with regard to safety enforcement, recycling industries now agrees that they're going to maintain special insurance for a city-required third-party management field expert. This would be someone who's going to evaluate the conditions of their operations and provide recommendations. And the traffic queuing issues are twofold. Those are on numbers 19 and 23. So RI has agreed that all of the delivery employee and customer traffic will be directed onsite and will be parked onsite. On construction, that's on number 19. On number 23, they have agreed to limit the amount of time that the types of off-site big trucks that you would see, for instance, for concrete, et cetera, would be maximum of two months to reduce traffic. They've also agreed that the roadways that would be protected are the city roadways, and they are identified by name. The, let's see, what, okay. Also, number 35 allows the community development director only one level of review and approval, and that would be to technical amendments for the transfer processing report. All other types of expansions or requests for modification to the permits would come to the city council. You will see that in number 60. On water quality, the only issue that remains and that we emphasize but they have agreed to was that vehicle washing within the city, the city must approve the location for that. On the occup, they will be submitting, meaning RI will be submitting, the storm permit from Water Quality Control Board before their occupancy permit. The time limits for these were not specified in the conditions that had been approved by the planning commission. On the issue of the garbage flow, there was no requirement that RI prove up the source of the waste streams. They have agreed to maintain logs and provide them now to the city at least every 90 days for review. On the host fee, they've agreed to negotiate that host fee with the city before they actually take possession of and occupy their new building. Forty, 59 requires that they must begin construction on the new building, the 21,000-plus-acre building, square footage, not acre, I'm sorry, by March 31st, and they must be completed by September 30th, 2021, and that the permit would be voided in the event of noncompliance. 60 is, that requires future mod, if there are requests for future modification, if it's consistent with city ordinances, then in effect, and I'm not sure if the city attorney wishes to speak to this, but the specific language, your ordinances today, as I cover on the next page, provide for first review by the planning director, then if there is an appeal, up to planning commission, and then finally to you as a last appellate level, the last appellate body. We have asked, and RI has agreed, that reviews of proposed changes to their application and expansion would come directly to the city council. There would have to be ordinance changes in order to make that fully enforceable. Therefore, RI also agreed that in the event that the city council does not approve ordinance changes, then the city will provide Stop the Dump with direct mail notice or email notice of any request for application so that we have the ability to appeal those condition application changes if we believe necessary. Okay. With that, I want to thank the city, the city staff, the city attorney for working with us, and RI for working with us to try and achieve a final resolution. I ask that you grant the appeal but adopt the conditions as modified. Thank you very much.
To the mayor?
Yes.
May I ask one question of Ms. Barnes, and I'll be asking the same question to Mr. Mitchell as well?
Certainly.
Thank you. Just for the clarity of the record, it's my understanding that you agreed to the proposed revisions to conditions and do not object to the project approvals with the imposition of the modified conditions as proposed. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. We have anybody here to speak on behalf of recycling industries? If so, please.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. My name is Patrick Mitchell. I'm a partner with the law firm Mitchell Chadwick in Roseville, California, and I'm here tonight on behalf of the applicant, Recycling Industries, Inc. We're here from a unanimous 5-0 approval by your planning commission at the end of November, which was based on a recommendation of your expert staff report. We'd also like to thank the city staff for doing an excellent job. I essentially agree with everything in the city staff report tonight, just so you're clear on that. And we note that, as noted in that report, multiple experts, both in your city, outside experts hired by your city, some of which are here tonight, agree that the mitigated negative declaration was adequate under SECA, which of course, we entirely agree with. We don't think there were any legal issues ever with the mitigated negative declaration, and again, agreed with by your county staff and outside experts. The details, I won't bore you with, because between your city staff PowerPoint and Bridgette Barnes' presentation, I had a long PowerPoint at the planning commission, but I thought I would not suffer you through all that. But if you want to look for the details, it's in your packet, your staff report attachment 10s, my PowerPoint, and my client's PowerPoints, we had separate ones. Scott Coonan gave a presentation, and I gave one as well. It's attachment 10 to the staff report, as I understand it. And in addition, our detailed response to the appellant's letter stating issues with the mitigated negative declaration is attachment 21 to your staff report. So they put in a detailed letter saying their problems, we put in a detailed letter saying they're wrong. On their other issue of the mitigation measures not being enforceable, we entirely agree with your staff report. They're absolutely enforceable. I don't think there's any issue with any of them. They're typical mitigation measures in any city or county all over the state where I've worked. I see nothing in there that's unenforceable, and that was noted by your staff presentation tonight as well. So that's sort of the past the way I look at it. For today and tonight, moving forward, we have worked with appellant's counsel, Bridgette Barnes and I, we actually met the day after Christmas. I was supposed to be in Tahoe snow skiing, and I waited a day so we could meet, try to work this out, which didn't happen that day, but it started a trajectory that ended up that being the case. So we've been talking for about four weeks now, because we were talking a few days before then, trying to set up a date to talk, and we did reach agreement. As your city attorney asked, and when he asked me, he'll get the same answer, we went through a detailed analysis of what they wanted, additional revisions to the conditions of approval, which I might note for the record, many of which had nothing to do with appellate points. But that's okay, we're trying to reach resolution, we're able to do that. So the agreement between recycling industries and the appellant tonight, we agreed to revise 11 conditions of approval, which have been stated already, but I know you have the redline of those conditions of approval, as I understand it. But for the record, those are conditions 1, 4, 8, 16, 18, 19, 23, 32, 35, 50, and 51. And in addition, two new conditions were added at the end. The planning commission conditions were 1 through 58. We reached agreement and agreed to add conditions 59 and 60, and I won't go through those in detail. Bridgette Barnes did, your staff did, and we'd be here for another 10 minutes doing that unnecessarily, in my view, unless you'd like to hear from me on all the details, I'd be more than glad to do that. When we were all done, and we had come to sort of final conclusion on what the appellant and recycling industries thought would be acceptable revisions to the conditions of approval, which happened Saturday, Saturday, this Saturday passed, we worked pretty much all day Saturday to reach that resolution with Bridgette Barnes, and going back and forth with the clients, of course, and all the things it takes to do that. Your city attorney then worked Saturday and Sunday to propose some clarifying changes, which we and the attorney for the appellant, Bridgette Barnes, agreed with all of his proposed changes. They're all clarifying and good, so that all happened, and that's what ultimately led to what's in front of you is the redlines that we agreed to. So from our perspective, on behalf of recycling industries, we respectfully request the city council of Yuba City to uphold the approvals that were approved by your planning commission, again unanimously, 5-0, and in addition, further condition the project with the redline revised conditions of approval agreed to by recycling industries, excuse me, and the appellant, and as I understand, also supported by the city attorney. So if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them, but that's my short presentation.
One question for you, sir, if I may. The conditions established by our planning commission and the conditions mutually agreed upon by yourself and Bridgette Barnes' office, two separate things, are any of them in conflict with each other?
No. That's, yeah, we worked through all those.
All right. Thank you very much.
To the mayor, if I could ask the same question. So just so we're clear for the record, you agreed to the proposed revisions to conditions and do not object to the project approvals with the imposition of the modified conditions as proposed. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And just a clarification, if I could, Mr. Mayor, our office does not approve or support of any sort of thing, we're neutral, we look at it as to the legal issues, as to whether it meets, um, minimum legal requirements. Thank you.
I understand, thank you. All right. Thank you, sir. Moving on now to members of the public, um, open hearing for public comment, please remember all comments and questions must be made at the podium. Additionally, please, if you're inclined, please withhold your applause or any other responses so we can, uh, make sure we hear everybody. If you have any questions, please direct them to me. Staff can respond to questions after comments have been, have been concluded, and if you no longer wish to speak when your name is called, if you change your mind, you do not have to come forward. We have one speaker here, um, Mr. Kang, and, and anyone else who may follow him will have three minutes to speak. A member of the public who previously requested additional time to speak and writing twenty-four hours in advance is normally allotted five minutes, and if there's any large groups, we encourage you to select a representative to express the opinion of your group. All right, so we have one comment card, and I can't, not quite, Sukjit Kang. Welcome, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Sukjit Kang, and I live on seventeen thirteen Morrison Band Yuba City. And, uh, I, I support recology as a local businesses, they, they need a better location to grow, so they need location away from residential area. There are many issues with the current site. Baseball field is just across from the current location, bike lane, only place for bikers on the side of ninety-nine is just next to it. There are many homes close by the smelly trucks will impact on the traffic, and prices of the property is near vicinity. Please give them few years to find an alternative site, and meantime, do not allow any expansion of current site. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else from the public here to speak tonight? Yes, ma'am. Please step forward, state your name, and you'll have three minutes.
Hi, I don't really need three minutes, but my name's Kathy Tina Harrow, I live at sixteen hundred Hastings Court, Yuba City, which is east of Railroad and Bogan Railroad, right there. My neighbor just spoke. Um, with all due respect, when I'm expecting company, I clean my house, so the fact that you visited on a day when things were clean and not smelling, that's great, but there's been plenty of times that I've taken, um, bottles or cans or whatever, and it's very smelly. And on certain days during the summer, if the wind's just right, you can smell all that lovely recyclable, putrisable material. So I'm glad to hear that you guys have, um, kept it to the same, but it is currently an issue. It, it's still an issue. So while I haven't complained publicly, I've neighbors and, you know, we sit over the fence, talk over the fence, we complain a lot on those particularly smelly days, so, um, I just wanted that noted. Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else, please feel free to step up? One? Yes, sir, come on up.
My name is Vincent Burns, I live at, this name's not gonna say it, five-four-nine Clint Avenue or Clintway. My, uh, shop is a stone's throw away from Recycling Industries, and I wanted to say that I never smell anything over there, and never had a problem. I don't smell, I smell the sewer plant, poop plant, what we call it, a little every now and then. That's it, and there's very little traffic around there, and I'm there a lot, so, I just wanted that to be said.
Very good. Thank you very much. Anybody else? Yes, sir? You beat you by about a half a second.
My name's Suk Basi, sixteen thirty-five Hastings Court, Yuba City.
Excuse me, one second. Ma'am, did you get that name? Can you say your name one more time?
S U K H B A.
Thank you. Thank you.
You know, I'm for recology to expand and everything, I just believe the location where they're doing it, it should be somewhere else. This is right next to all of our neighbors where we live, we don't need to smell garbage all day long. I mean, I got nothing against business, but these, I just feel like they need to go away, away out in the country somewhere. And, uh, basically, uh, you know, that's all our neighbors feel. You know, we don't have a problem, we all produce garbage, it needs to go somewhere, but that is not the right location. They just need to find a better location for it. I know it's zoned for industrial, but I think it could be taken somewhere else. You know, that's about it, that's my feelings, you know, no, I'm nothing against business, business needs to grow, but this sort of business needs to be taken somewhere else. There are a lot of people from Sutter speaking for it, well, let's move it over there, there's plenty of empty land over there, why we need it in our backyard here? You know, that's all I have to say, you know? We just don't need it right there, it's just too close to neighbors, neighborhood. People go for a walk, people take their dog for a walk on Levy, why do we need to smell that? It's already bad enough, like, uh, gentleman spoke earlier, we have to smell the sewer, we don't need garbage there, right? So that's all I have to add, hope you guys consider that. I know people that live there don't like it, you know? People that don't live, I mean, people that live there don't like it, but people that live away from there, like they live in Sutter, they don't mind. I had a question for a gentleman, I go, why don't we move it over to Sutter? He goes, well, Sutter people will not let you allow it. Well, why do we have to have it in our backyard? That's it, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. And we'll get right back to you. Whoever wants to go next, you can stand up in the back wall.
Okay. So hello, my name's Heather Essman, uh, I live on twenty-twenty Lincoln Road here in Yuba City, and I'm relatively new here, but I actually have kind of a different question or a different attitude about this whole situation, so I don't really, I don't know the, um, the owner or anything very well, I've just been going over there occasionally to see, so it's, I, I wouldn't address anything about smell or anything like that. My, my question is, what is the city's actual plan for the future of waste management? So currently you have a situation where there's joint powers of authority, I believe, and you have different cities working together, including those cities in Yuba County. Um, at some point, it, I, I understand Marysville's landfill was too full, so I suppose that's now going to Wheatland, that's my understanding. So is there some sort of a, uh, plan that the city has for the future of the waste management in the city that's anticipated some sort of growth within the next few years? Um, because if this is part of the plan, then that's fine, if it's not part of the plan, then they need to come up with some sort of an alternative, because just assuming that everybody in Yuba City is going to go over to Marysville to the transfer station for, forever, is probably not, um, a viable solution for the future, and we need to consider things twenty years down the road and not just, um, from right now, from a standpoint. So if this fits in there, and actually I think the concept is really good, particularly for Yuba City, um, residents, but in the future, we have to have some sort of a plan set up in place so that we know, is this going to fit in with that plan? If not, if the city has no plan, then let the bus, local businessmen do something, if not, then the city needs to come up with a, with a viable, uh, reasonable solution for us, because I have to, to take half of my day to go all the way over to Marysville just to, to dump green waste, that's just sort of my open question, so.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay.
My name is Susan Jones, five-four-five Queensbury Way, Yuba City, and I would like to say that, let me see if I get this right, the Stop the Dump alias the garbage company who had a comfortable monopoly on the garbage throughout this area, is now writing the rules for another business on how they will compete against them. The newer and much smaller company has bent over backwards to get approval to do business. Seem to me that this whole process has been a shameful abuse of the approval process. And I would also like to indicate that try living without garbage removal, you will see really dangerous and damaging things within a matter of days, if not less. We need this process, it's not, this is not a, a, a large experience that we have to go into great detail about, it needs to be done, it may, it will never be perfect for anybody's location, but try living without it.
Thank you very much, sir.
Hi, my name's Justin Lane, eleven sixty Gene Court, Marysville. Um, I just want to state, just because I had to come to Yuba City today already, and I got behind a truck that was hauling bags to the dump, uh, recology, and he lost garbage on the bridge. Well, what'd that do? Rainy day, about causing accident, everybody stopping, swerving, so, without being said, if we keep the traffic on the back roads and off the main roads, turn to Marysville and see the traffic. I mean, we got all the garbage going into Marysville, recology, I live, uh, maybe a mile away, yeah, I smell it, but it's been there for how many years? It's at my back door. Yeah, you get a fly problem here and there, but, you know, without that being said, I, I'm for the transfer station. Um, I hope they put it in, um, I come to Yuba City to do dump runs for my, my grandma. Why, why should I take it to Marysville when I can take it right here? I feel that we, we need a transfer station here to help out with the traffic over there, people are worried about traffic here, come to Marysville at five o'clock at night, it's crazy, so, that's all I got.
Thank you very much, sir. Anybody else? All right. I have, had the last public comment, we'll, I'll go ahead and off, allow an opportunity for rebuttal from the appellant and the applicant, if they're interested. Appellant, come on once.
I don't have any.
Nothing, ma'am? Okay. Applicant? Nothing, sir? Okay. Staff have anything else to add by chance? Nope. All right, thank you very much. Council questions before we close public hearing? Anybody have any questions? Nothing?
Uh, Mr. Kuhnan, can you step up?
Oh, yeah, I got a question for you, please, sir.
Yes, sir.
My name is Scott Kuhnan, I reside at seventeen fifty-four Columbia Drive in Yuba City, and I'm the owner of Recycling Industries. And I must say that when I first walked in and saw all the law enforcement people, I thought we were gonna have war here tonight. But, uh, anyway, your question?
Yes, Mr. Kuhnan, um, thank you very much. Uh, I'm just thinking this as the worst-case scenario, is how it's gonna be done, because there's every day, I'm just thinking of the worst-case scenario. Uh, this was mentioned to you at the planning, this question was mentioned to you at the planning commission, and I really didn't get an answer from you, I'm hoping you can give me an answer tonight, and this is gonna be concerned odor. Yes, sir, if you get an odor complaint on your facility, how are you gonna handle the situation? If you could please answer that, in the worst-case scenario?
We have, in this building, this twenty, um, one thousand six hundred square foot building, we have a misting, uh, an odor preventative misting system that goes in the roof, and, um, that will prevent a tremendous amount of odor. Second of all, we are having a, um, a, a washdown every day, a washdown, um, procedure to wash the floors for anything that might, uh, be, uh, held there. I don't recall if, if you've been to our plant in Sacramento, if you've been to that?
No, sir, I did not. That's right.
Uh, our tonnage in Sacramento, we take in probably, oh, tons per day, David, um, how much? We take in about two hundred, sometimes three hundred tons a day, and it all is, uh, it, it goes into a large bunker, and, uh, I have had people, many people there, look at that site, um, members of the, it used to be planted, uh, Merdeball came down, and, uh, there's just no, there's no smell there. There is also, um, I think the transfer station that's right next to us, gee, it's not over probably four or five hundred yards away in Sacramento, um, actually, it's North Highlands, the county has a transfer station there, and we've taken numerous people over to that transfer station. It's an open air, principally an open air transfer station, and there's, there's just no smell there, because the stuff you, people bring in things, they dump it on the ground, we help them unload their trucks, uh, vehicles, whatever the case might be, we scoop it up, load it on a truck, and it goes to Sacramento or wherever the, the, um, dump is that we haul to it, this doesn't stay there.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Kuhnan, I have one more question for you, sir. Uh, this is concerning, uh, trash falling off vehicles and so on and so forth. Um, recology has approximately a mile to a mile and a half entrance to their site, that's we're gonna say from Buchanan to the transfer station's, uh, site, and that's more or less Highway twenty, one-lane road coming in, and your site's gonna have several, uh, directions, you know, they're coming from Bog, uh, south of you, north of you, Lincoln, and so on and so forth. Uh, you mentioned in the planning commission meeting that you have one gentleman that does an excellent job, that takes care of, uh-
Yeah, that's Charlie, I think he's hiding here somewhere.
Yes, yes, so, um, yeah, thank you, yes. So, you know, here we go, worst-case scenario, sir, this, this is worst-case scenario, uh, you know, you're gonna be doing great, you're gonna be having lots of people coming to your site, we hope, and we're gonna have trash scattered throughout, uh, is this gentleman, or if this gentleman gets overwhelmed, are we gonna have-
Incapacitated?
Yes, sir, yeah, no, I'm just gonna say overwhelmed, are, are we gonna be able to step up and help this, you know, because-
Definitely, that's not a problem.
Okay.
We do that in Sacramento, Charlie at the present time is the one doing it, and if Charlie chooses to retire, and we hope he doesn't, we hope he stays around with us for quite some time, but, uh, we have always provided people, even at our location on Power Inn Road in Sacramento, we police up and down Power Inn and down Cucamonga, and on this particular site here, we will go Epley Drive, Putman Drive, Burns Drive, and also up and down, uh, what's that, the Highway twenty, uh, Highway-
Garden Highway.
Garden Highway.
Okay.
And we'll go up and down Garden Highway, too, we'll do whatever it has to take-
Okay.
Uh, to, 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 to keep it clean and neat, that's, that's the secret.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kuhnan, I appreciate it, thank you.
Scott, real quick, since you're up there, I have a question.
Yes.
Are there, you, we talked about a lot of things, uh, based on Vice Mayor Cardo's question about odor control.
Yes.
A lot of folks have stepped up, um, tonight, and I completely empathize with that, I've gotten a lot of emails, but that's, that seems one of the major concerns at, and fugitive,
Yes.
debris. Um, are, is there anything that we've talked about as far as odor control that you're going to do that you are not doing already?
Yes, we don't have any misting system at the present time, um, and at the present time, any washdown that we do there is, is minimal, because we do largely, um, you know, aluminum cans, uh, the young lady that, uh, bless her heart, that came earlier and said she, uh, I can't remember, I don't recall what her name was, she said that it didn't, uh, she, she, she experienced a lot of odors, and she lived quite some time away. Oddly enough, I live over in that area also, and I've, I've never noticed any odors. If there's any odors at all that came from anything that we did, I think it would come more from the sewer treatment plant than from us, which I've heard is, is, has been a problem, I understand it's been mitigated some way, but, uh, those are the only two things that I can think of now that we will be doing- But, uh, those are the only two things that I can think of now that we will be doing, that we're not doing at the present time.
Alright, um, just so I'm clear too, you're with only the, no additional, you know, a hundred tons a day max, right? Only ten percent of produceables. And, um, it's only gonna get better, because you're adding these additional odor control issues, correct?
I'm sorry, say, say that again?
You're, you're not increasing your intake, but you are adding measures to control odor, so it's going to get better. You're gonna improve what's already there. Is that correct? Does that make sense? In addition, I believe to the misting, you're adding a chemical that also controls odor, if I read correctly?
Uh, I, I, I would assume there is a chemical, I have not gone into the chemical analysis of what's in that misting system, we haven't bought it yet. So I can't, I can't answer that question.
I thought I read something about that as well.
Yeah.
Yes, through the mayor. Um, I'm not sure, Mr. Kuhn, is it's gonna be you that answers this, or your son? Uh, but I also will have questions for Ms. Langley concerning the city, uh, and our wastewater treatment plant below. Uh, part of this process is getting the public input, uh, because it does affect them, and along the lines of the smell. Um, I have not visited your facility in Sacramento, but, uh, previously I'd spoke to your son, and what is the size of your facility in Sacramento?
We have a hundred and fifty-five thousand square foot building, thirty-five feet high, sits on eight acres.
Okay, uh, to that point, we're looking at a twenty-one thousand square foot building, taking roughly fifty percent of the same amount of waste that you're taking in Sacramento, so, uh, just by simple math, the smell should be less in Sacramento, because we got a li- larger area for it to dissipate across. Um, this new system, um, very much inquisitive about it, because unlike an open air system, the, um, the offloading of materials, the sorting materials, will all be contained inside, correct? Nothing is exposed to the exterior, it's all within four walls.
That's correct.
Okay, and that would include, I guess, roll up doors for the people to pull in through, they would be, um, somehow mitigated where they're rolled down?
Actually, they're sliding doors.
Okay. Um, and then with that, uh, I would be, you know, curious more about this misting system, because, uh, I'm an animal person, I have horses, I have dogs, and at the end of the day, if my dog's out running in the rain, or my horses get wet, they just smell like wet dog or wet horse. So, can you explain how wetting down, uh, garbage is going to, I know it'll cut down the dust, but I'm more concerned about how it's really, and I want to understand how that's going to mitigate the smell issue that we've heard over and over tonight?
All I can tell you right at the present time, because we have not purchased it, nor have I seen one in operation, but I know they exist, and I know they work, and that's really, I'm, 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 I'm sorry that I can't give you more information in that. It's not something that we've gotten into, I see David is coming up, and he's done some research on this, he may be able to answer your question.
Thank you.
David Kuhn, um, eleven sixty-nine Claro Court, General Manager, Recycling Industries. Uh, the overhead misting system has a odor neutralizing agent that's put into it. It's, uh, fairly typical for enclosed buildings, uh, that are transfer stations. I would direct your attention to our local enforcement agent, uh, Andy Davis from the Yuba County. Uh, that man is the police officer for transfer stations. His role will, to be to physically inspect our facility for all these issues that are being brought up by the public, and to ensure that we're in compliance. And odor is the same, uh, will be under the same scrutiny that Recology's transfer station is in Marysville. Now, to date, uh, I have, I've, I've gone through several of those reports. They haven't even gotten a, an odor issue from, at least from state standards. The other thing for us is, what's different about our Sacramento facility compared to this facility is, our Sacramento facility is a recycling facility. It does get a fair amount of garbage, but it, it's pure recycling, and we're not under the forty-eight hour threshold. I think that's a key thing that the residents here need to understand is, uh, the Feather River Air Quality Management District opined and weighed in on this project and determined that because the material was not gonna be on the ground legally for more than forty-eight hours, there was no threat for odor or decomposition to set in. And that's one of the biggest, that's probably the biggest, uh, uh, contributor that, of odor is, if it sits for more than forty-eight hours, you know, it, it, it starts to decompose. So that's what the potrescible limit is too, we're, we're limited to ten percent potrescible waste. The LEA has determined and said there's a method to determine that potrescible waste, and as part of their monthly inspection, they will do sampling tests to determine if the waste pile has more than ten percent potrescible waste. And they can do that and enforce it, and they have probably more enforcement, uh, authority, I think, than the city in that they've got four or five pages of conditions they have to enforce us on, and they can shut us down quite fast, because they'll be, they're gonna be there every month, uh, required. Whereas code enforcement would only show up if there was a complaint. Uh, the LEA is gonna be there every month, uh, going through the forty or fifty things, um, and ensuring that we comply with what's called the transfer processing report. So, hopefully that answers your question as far as the overhead misting system, the water on the mist actually never, you never feel it. If you're standing underneath a thirty-foot roof, I've seen these systems, you won't, you won't feel it. It just keeps the odor down. Um, and then my father mentioned we have to do the night washing, and then certainly the forty-eight hour, uh, removal. I, I would, you know, we took some planning commissioners there, we took them to the two thousand ton a day transfer station, and with all due respect to what people say, uh, I, I mean, uh, Commissioner Dale Eiler stood fifty yards from a thousand tons of garbage, which we would never have, and I believe his opinion would be that he didn't smell anything. So, I think with the being indoors and the fact that we're turning, that's why the size of the building is kind of a little error. Uh, we've got a hundred and fifty-five thousand square foot building, because we store recyclables, it takes a while to get it shipped. In this arena, the garbage hits, we gotta get it on the truck, we gotta get it out, so we'll never have a pile or storage that's any more than half a day, because we gotta, it's, it's gotta move every forty-eight hours.
Okay, um, along those lines, uh, the gentleman you referred to, he's here this evening?
Mr. Davis, uh, Andy Davis, the local enforcement agent for the state.
Okay, we could say in his expert opinion that the enclosure building with the misting system should resolve the concerns of the citizens who live nearby, the crawling?
If we're gonna ask him a question, I'd like to have him come up.
That's fine.
Did you have another question for me, or did you want to go to, I'll stand by.
I would hold tight, I'm probably gonna come back.
Andy Davis, Local Enforcement Agency, Yuba Sutter Counties. Could you ask your question again, please?
Oh, in your expert opinion, uh, as code enforcement, will this enclosure in this misting system, eliminate the odors ninety percent, ninety-five percent, a hundred percent that the residents who live near, nearby are concerned about?
Okay, in my expert opinion, it's not the code enforcement, I wanna say it's, we're different. I inspect the facility on a monthly basis, um, unexpectedly, it's not something that I set up. I don't have an expert, I, I can't answer that.
Okay.
You know, because it's not there, it's kind of a hypothetical thing, um. I'll say this, the transfer station that's, I currently inspect, you know, I haven't, I've been the LEA for about three and a half years, I haven't had a complaint there, that's my only experience. And they have a misting system, I can't tell you if they have the chemical component that they're gonna have, but I have not had a complaint there, um, but yeah, I, I can't answer that, because it's not, you know, it's not currently in operation, I can't speak for that.
You can just speak to the ones that you experienced, you haven't received a complaint on, they've been pretty much odor free.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, Mr. Mayor, if I can continue, I have a couple more, uh, Ms. Langley?
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel.
Uh, thank you for answering this, as a recent survivor of the belt room, I believe is what you called it, down at the water treatment plant. Um, uh, I, and you showed me the complexity of the plant. What will this wash down procedure? Um, is there measures with it being so close, because you talked about things coming into our wastewater treatment system? Um, is there any concerns from our wastewater treatment with any wash downs or anything going on at the, uh, transfer station just north?
No, we have a pre-treatment coordinator, a pre-treatment program. As part of their building permit process, we will be reviewing their plans and looking at what measures are required, um, to be put in place in terms of uh, fats, oil, grease capture, trash capture, before it goes into the sewer system and goes to the wastewater treatment facility. And then as part of that, we will do inspections.
Okay, thank you. Um, uh, I'm, thank you, Ms. Langley. Um, Mr. Kuhn, and back to you, I just, a final couple of questions here. Based upon all the information that was coming to us rather quickly, um, as, I commend both sides for coming together, trying to work this out. Um, stated by your attorneys, this is all agreeable to both parties. But further, would you agree that this is, uh, far limiting from what was originally proposed? When you, uh, proposed going from the three hundred back to the one hundred with the ten percent? This is, um, not what was presented a year ago, basically?
If, if you're referring to our original application, is that what you're referring to?
Well, yeah, the original where you upped it to the?
To three hundred tons, to three hundred tons, yes, this is, this is restricted back to, actually more restrictive than what we currently have with our existing transfer station permit.
Okay.
That we have, that was brought up, we haven't effectuated that, they didn't build the building, we couldn't receive any garbage. Um, so, but, anyway.
Okay, but you would say it's, it's more restrictive than what you currently have, and all parties have agreed to this?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, I'm good, thank you, Mr. Kuhn.
Thank you.
Through the mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
I think this, uh, my questions might be for the, our city staff, so, and it's Ben or Dennis? And I'm glad to, um, have Andy Davis here today to, because one, that was one of my questions about how often, um, was this facility to be monitored? And, um, with all the conditions that have been raised and, and agreed, um, my, my question or my thoughts concern mostly about, um, I think it was presented about accountability. Um, who's holding each other accountable in the process, uh, not just in the process, but um, in hopes that something positive occurs here? How are we going to, um, withhold, uphold the city's accountability, um, to make sure that, um, those logs that are required, um, that the debris, um, is not occurring? Um, how consistently are we planning to make sure that those things are happening by us in the city? Um, to assure that, um, these conditions are just, um, not being held on, um, on the applicant's, um, side?
The, it's city's responsibility, that would, let's say the three-month reporting, um, you know, the city staff is just gonna have to follow through to, to do that. The main issue that I've heard tonight is about the odor, and something that didn't come up was the Feather River Air Quality Management District that oversees that also, in addition to all of this. And they do, I believe, have measuring devices if, if need be. And so, from the staff standpoint, you got the local enforcement agency, and he's out there, but also if we receive complaints or notice the odors, we're gonna call the Feather River Air Quality Management District, and they're gonna, they have enforcement powers as well as the city. As I mentioned in, uh, in the staff report, uh, the city ordinance gives the council great authority to revoke the use permit, bring it back to revised conditions, and so, there are all kinds of enforcement procedures to follow up with, if, if need be. Um, businesses know that, I mean, the city does use permits and all types of permits all the time. And, and typically, business owners respect that, because they don't wanna have to come back here and go through all of that, and so it's usually not too much of a problem. This site has been there for, I don't know, eight or nine years, I believe, and that I'm aware of, the city hasn't received any odor complaints or any other complaints. So, we're not anticipating a problem, but there are certainly plenty of tools there to enforce it, if need be.
Yes, as I reviewed all the thousands of pages at this point, um, that it, one, and I'm glad that you pointed that out, that there, the city had not received, um, specific complaints or citations had not been re, issued. Is that accurate?
That's correct.
Um, so, the monitoring as we continue forward, I believe is something that we need to have a clear process in that, as, as, as we look at this, uh, hopefully come to some agreement at the, at the council level. But, my concern is that, um, if we're discussing odor complaints and no complaints have been given, um, if we're discussing, um, debris complaints, but no complaints of business submitted, um, in the city's aspect, I, I would say, so, how can we make sure that this is going to be upheld? That's my biggest concern.
Well, okay, to be honest, the city doesn't have staff that drives around checking on businesses every day. We're not, we're not the city police that checks on business doing that, and I don't think businesses want that. But if we receive complaints, um, we have code enforcement officers that go out there and to inspect it. And like I mentioned, there is plenty of enforcement capabilities. I think Darren would like to say something here, also.
Darren Gale, your interim Development Services Director. I'm actually, just today, we met with, uh, our code enforcement officer, and we, we discussed this very specific project. And we wanted to set up a plan of how to make sure that we can ensure that the conditions are being followed. Um, what we can do is make sure in the next, um, council agenda, if this is brought back on the February fifth, we will describe what that is, but we talked about at least, uh, quarterly, uh, sites visits by a code enforcement officer, at least for the first year or two, that we would then record that, uh, within the use permit to, to, to demonstrate that they follow those conditions. And then, as time goes by, you know, maybe it's eighteen months that we do that, and then, uh, we, we go back to what we do on most of our cases with code enforcement, which is we're responsive when we receive a complaint. But at least initially, uh, we can demonstrate the code enforcement went outs, and we ensured that the conditions were being followed. And of course, that would be in addition to all the other items that were discussed this evening with the LEA, the Feather River Air Quality Management District, uh, your sewer, uh, pre-treatment and, um, going out and take, taking a look. Um, also, we do have a site very nearby where we can have employees, uh, very easily drive by, uh, from a variety of different departments to check on this, but, but very specifically, we, we do plan, and like I said, we, we just talked about that today, and Councilmember, it's, it's a great, uh, question, and I will make sure that we provide something in the staff report to just give you, uh, as an attachment, uh, what we plan on doing and, and, you know, kinda how long.
That would be wonderful, because in that, um, there's a lot of conditions that it's stating that the city will, you know, determine, approve, review, monitor. And so, in these conditions that we were given as final modifications, I would, it would be much more helpful to have that, um, separated, so I can see clearly what's, um, the responsibility by each party, and what we are responsible to adhere to in this agreement as well.
Anybody have anything else? Alright, we'll go ahead and if no one else from the public wishes to speak, public comment period, we'll go ahead and close the public comment hearing. Bring the matter back to counsel for deliberation, discussion, any comments? And a motion?
Yes, sir.
Just a few comments. First, I'd like to, uh, thank our city manager and our, uh, Public Works Director uh, for the briefing I received yesterday, addressed a lot of the questions that have been raised this evening regarding, uh, a lot of the questions that came up. Um, I also want to recognize the efforts of both sides of, um, who've come together to, uh, to make a very contentious issue, uh, come to some sort of a compromise. Uh, like, I can gather, it probably was not a very easy process, but, um, to Recycling Industries Council and, um, Stop the Dumps Council, and to our, our council, applaud your efforts in, in seeing that happen. As a former, uh, person who was in charge of code enforcement, as a fire chief, um, I reckon- As a former person who was in charge of code enforcement, as a fire chief, I recognize that the public will likely be the first line of defense when it comes to anything that's going on that causes grief, i.e. trash, odors, et cetera, so it will be incumbent upon us as a city to be responsive to those complaints as they come in and address those concerns, and as one person on your city council committing to the citizens that are concerned about the issues down there, that we will be vigilant and make sure that as those complaints come in, they'll be investigated, and if actions need to be taken, we'll see too that that happens. I'm pleased that the LEA will be actively involved in random visits and inspections, I think that was new information to me, so thank you, sir, for being here tonight and being available to answer that question, probably my biggest issue throughout this whole thing was keeping, keeping material from outside of Utes Sutter Counties from coming into our city, so I'm very pleased to see that, that is a condition of this, of the agreement that has been made. It is, as a person who, who walked a lot of southeast, south Utes City during the most recent campaign, to say that it's not an issue would be not necessarily true, as I stood on people's doorsteps and engaged in conversations with them, they are aware of the issue, I do know, again, from experience of working for the city for thirty years, they don't always come to public hearings and voice their concerns, but they did when I was campaigning, so I trust that not only recycling industries, but we as a city will be responsive to our citizens, should this, should this, should any problems develop, but once again, thanks to those who came together to take this fairly long, drawn-out process and seem to have us on a track to address it to mutual satisfaction of all those involved, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else?
I'm gonna, through the mayor.
Yes.
I'm gonna piggyback on what councilman.
I'm Boom Gardner.
Yeah, I know. I lost, I lost it there for a second, I'm sorry, Mark, anyway, I wanna thank staff, I wanna thank the Kunnans, and also Stop the Dump, this has been a long process, and hopefully tonight it's gonna come to an end, and I wish good luck and prospered future for the Kuhn family, and with that, I would like to make a recommendation.
By that mean motion?
A motion, yes.
Let's give everybody an opportunity to speak, if we may first, do you have anything to say, sir?
Mr. Mayor, just ditto, thank you for all the parties coming together.
To, to listen to both sides, it's really important to have that opportunity, and I really thank both sides, but I also thank the community for showing up this evening, and be willing to share your thoughts, concerns, and that's really important, I think that that's probably the most important part of this process, and I hope that we gain from this process some fairness, some transparency, and some consistency in the process, I'm hoping that as a strong council, we'll be able to deliver this message across within our city staff and in the community, and that we gain the trust of you from the community to not wait to the moment that it's become such a difficult situation that we have to come to these large numbers of conditions, but I hope that we'll be able to have this remediated and mitigated even prior to that, and I'm hoping that our planning commission and our representatives in those have those kinds of standards as well as we represent the city, and part of that is, it's important for me to have fairness and transparency, so I thank our city staff for doing tremendous amount of work, it's taken extra effort, but we wanted to make sure that it was fair and accurate and clear, and here we are at this moment, so thanks for your time.
Very good, I'll take a chance or an opportunity right now too, to also recognize the efforts of city staff, and then also the folks at R.I., and even, and the folks at Stop the Dump, I know that there's a lot of hours, a lot of, many hours, and probably not more than a few sleepless nights, perhaps on both sides, that went into the effort, and our city attorney I know was, he'd been really busy, and even on a personal level down there, working on things for us, and this is a culmination of a lot of efforts, it's a culmination of a lot of people who have demonstrated their ability, not only dedication to their, to their cause, but an ability to negotiate, to be fair, and come to a reasonable conclusion for the benefit of not only the business, but the folks who were concerned about that business, and most importantly, our city and our residents, I am not immune to the fact, and I appreciate the fact, that we, at least Councilman Cardoza or Vice Mayor Cardoza and I have, I think I stopped counting at two thousand emails from folks, I think it was from the Stop the Dump website somehow, to my home email, in opposition of this project, I received fewer in support of it, however, knowing that everything came to a head on both sides, and at the top of that pyramid is an attorney, and that attorney represents all those people, and if both sides of those attorneys represent those people, that they can come to an agreement on their behalf, I'm good, and we've asked a lot of good questions, I'm very proud of all of us up here, that we've clearly put a lot of effort into it, and as we should, it's our job, and we came to a, I think, a reasonable and logical conclusion based on the work of many, many people, so I thank you for that, with that noted, I will entertain a motion if there's anyone.
Okay, through the mayor.
Yes, sir.
I would like to make a motion to adopt the resolution denying the appeal and approving the adoption of the latest study and the migratory declaration EA seventeen dash ten for the project and use permit seventeen dash zero five. And there's something else?
Yes, sir.
To the mayor, if I can clarify your motion, so your, your motion is to direct staff to come back with that resolution, consistent with the direction that's the proposed revised conditions, at the next meeting for final approval on February fifth, is that your motion?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Thank you for that clarification. Do I have a second?
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye, through the mayor.
Yes, sir.
I have a question before we actually take the vote.
All right. You're getting that close, man.
I was, I was on it, in regards to this matter, how, part of how we ended up at this position tonight has been through the inconsistent message that has gone on about this project for quite some time, may I ask a question of our attorney?
Yes.
Mr. Chapin, is it possible that our city manager in conjunction with our mayor put together a specific fact sheet describing what happened here tonight, because as the mayor said, and as Councilman Boom Gardner said, there's a lot of contention out there in this community, and misinformation is what we cannot have, can we put together a press release fact sheet that shows what actually transpired, so the public doesn't think that there's a three hundred ton a day limit transfer station going in, but all of these, we don't have to get specific with sixty-some-odd conditions, but to let them know what's actually occurred, because we need to be transparent, as Councilman Escondola said, and can that be something that can be added and looked at to where it's done prior to the February fifth meeting, so the public knows what we actually did here tonight?
Thank you, Councilmember Shaw, it is a legal option for the council to direct and authorize both the city manager and working in conjunction with the mayor to put out an educational press release as to what happened this evening, as to the major, major points, it would require the direction of the council in order to do that, so one option for you would be to ask for a friendly amendment as part of the main motion, in order to include that as direction and authorization as appropriate.
Thank you, then, Mr. Mayor, would Vice Mayor Cardoza be in support of a friendly amendment to include an informational press release to be drafted between our city manager and you as the mayor of this council?
It's good of me.
Sounds good to you?
Okay. So, so I need to.
One second, just to clarify, we're just gonna, you just want to summarize what we're approving tonight, what we're doing?
That is correct, so the, final product, so the citizens of this community know what we're coming back before us on February fifth.
I think that's reasonable.
To the mayor, for my clarification, procedurally, we need to have Councilmember Escondola also agree to it, because she gave the second as to whether or not she wants to do that, and then my suggestion is that if there is any such release done, that it would note for the public that there is going to be a continued public hearing on February fifth, where the development permit portion can also be heard, but with regards to the friendly amendment to the second.
I'm not sure if to ask you the question, Councilman Shaw, that the press release, I think, is a natural process of how we're going to educate the community, and hap, the next hearing will be happening in February, so I'm not exactly sure of the, why to do an additional press release when we were gonna come back in February.
Can I give you my reasoning? I will take the actions by the applicant after the planning commission meeting, to where R.I. released on their Facebook that the planning commission unanimously approved the large volume transfer station, but didn't clarify everything else that went on in that meeting, I wanna make sure that we've taken the time and done our due diligence to hear this, and go through a thoughtful process, hearing all the facts, so that the public understands exactly what's coming back before us on the fifth, and there's no miscommunication by any party.
Okay, well, I, I see your point, I hear your point, I should say, I haven't seen it yet, and as long as the press releases within one page and a few bullet points, I don't, I think we're coming back in February, I just don't think that it's necessary to add additional work to the staff when we're so close to finishing this, I think it would be most appropriate if we did something after in February, when we determined whatever the result would be, instead of doing something just a little premature, from my view.
So the point is, just, is they're gonna find out anyway, and you don't have a problem with them waiting until afterward, things are finalized on February fifth versus right now?
It's probably already out on the Facebook, as one of the audience members said, so yes.
Right, but we have nothing officially from us yet, so you'd rather wait until things are done and.
I'm okay with a one-page press release, few bullet points and.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I take that as a, you approved the second?
With the amendment being a small press release with a few bullet points.
Mr. Mayor, there's, there were a few slides that were presented by Dennis Cook that I think captured a lot of the salient points, that we can put into such a release that would cause a minimal requirement of staff time, and we could still achieve the purposes that were desired by council, expressed by Councilman Shaw.
A cut and paste, I don't know, as long as we have complete information, I don't think we have to limit to one page.
We'll capture the salient points.
Right, takes three, so be it.
Okay, the mayor has the gist of my motion.
And, and Mr. Mayor, only from a technical procedure, so the first, the vice mayor has agreed to generally do a press release, the second, Councilmember Escondola wants limitations on that of a certain size, as such, the vice mayor would need to give the nod that he has a comfort level with that before the vote could go through.
I'm teasing, I'm teasing.
This used to be simple, at least in two thousand eighteen, but I guess, here we are.
We just need to make sure that everybody's nodding the same direction on the same thing, so that the city clerk has, and staff have clear direction.
Before I make the motion, Councilman Escondola, how's a quarter paid ad, how's a quarter page ad, that should be more than enough?
What font?
Uh, no, okay, never mind, okay, what, what, Councilmember Escondola, yes, I agree to what she said, we'll just get this over with, I agree to put what she said, that's my first, that's my first.
Then, then there's been a motion with a friendly amendment, and Mr. Mayor, it is yours for the taking of the vote, thank you.
All right.
Are we having fun tonight?
Yes.
So we have a motion and a friendly amendment that we're going to approve, essentially, we're going to continue the item, giving it February fifth, direct staff to prepare a resolution approving the project as modified and updated by the conditions agreed to by both parties, and to return the resolution on February fifth for council consideration, and prepare a brief but thorough and accurate press release informing the public of what we did here tonight, oh geez.
To be coordinated through you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, just kidding, by the way, it's all, it's all good, got it?
Got it.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, there we go, approved, congratulations.
Congratulations, Mr. Kuhn.
Give a couple minutes for people to go have a cocktail, it'll be good.
That's all right.
Hey, you know what? All right, we will continue.